Here we go. We're going to call to order tonight's meeting of the Township of Bernards zoning board of adjustment. The first item on the agenda is the flag salute, so if you can stand, please stand.
What is to be said in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all?
In accordance with the requirement of the open public meeting laws, notice of this meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building Collier Lane, Baskin Ridge, New Jersey. It was also mailed to the Bernardsville News, Whippany, New Jersey, the Courier News, and Breachwater, New Jersey, and it was also filed with the township clerk all on January 8th of this year, and it was mailed electronically to all those people who had requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. There will be no new cases heard after 10 o'clock tonight, and no new testimony heard after 10:30 tonight. Ms. Kiefer, can you do a roll call for us?
Certainly. Mr. Cambria, Ms. Paktar, and Mr. Helverson have indicated they are unable to attend this evening. Chairwoman Juniors?
Here.
Ms. Baumann?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Ms. Pedici?
Here.
Mr. Tancredi?
Here.
Ms. Herrera?
Here.
Mr. Sobieski?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Schley?
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Madam Chair, you have a quorum. You may proceed.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Madam Chair, I motion that we excuse the absences of Mr. Cambria, Ms. Paktar, and Mr. Helverson.
And I will second the motion.
Thank you both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of minutes. First, the October 9th regular session meeting. Those minutes were distributed earlier, and hopefully you've had a chance to review them. Are there any comments or adjustments or edits recommended on that? Or a motion to approve as drafted?
Motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Sir.
Thank you. Mr. Tancredi?
All righty. Chairwoman Juniors, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Tancredi, and Ms. Herrera are eligible to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Those that were not just mentioned abstain. And anybody saying no. Thank you.
Next item is also the approval of minutes from our special meeting session that was on October 17th of this year. Those minutes were also distributed. Are there any comments or edits for those who are motion to approve as drafted?
My motion to approve is drafted.
Thanks, Mr. Tancredi.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Again, Chairwoman Juniors, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Tancredi, and Ms. Herrera are eligible to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And those that were not mentioned will be abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Next on the agenda is 6A, which is the modification of a condition and extension of time to begin their project for Mohan, which was case ZB 23005A. Are you here tonight? Can you come on up, please?
Madam Chair, this is not a technical public area, but I'll swear.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes.
And could you please identify yourself?
Nandini Wadwa.
Great. So you're here, we understand, to ask for an extension of time to begin your project?
Yes.
Can you take us through why your project didn't begin and what your thoughts are going forward?
So our older one, she's a senior high school.
Can you speak right? Thank you.
Our older one, she's a senior in high school, and I didn't realize it between the college visits and the tours and the ACT and the essays. I think that year just went by, so she's now almost done with everything. We did get the price codes from the different pool companies, so we should be able to start it, but I just, it was first experience. I think it just took up the year without us realizing it, so we would appreciate if you can just give us a little more time. We didn't start anything at all, so I think with the same plans and with the same layouts, which we should be able to start now.
Have you had any changes to the plans that we saw? I guess it was about a year ago. Nothing has changed.
Only changed college apps.
Do you plan, do you plan on starting soon? Are you confident in terms of your time horizon?
Yeah, she's done with everything. Now it's like, we're done, so it's, we can start pretty much anytime. I did try to coordinate, but I think we're almost at the time window, so we wouldn't have been able to like start and then get the project started, so she recommended that we should file an extension, and we'll start like as soon as possible now.
Well, what we want to make sure is that as you're asking for an extension, there is enough time. We want to make sure that you have enough time and you're confident of that time window, because we'd hate it for it to run out again on you, so are you confident that if we give you an appropriate extension, that you'll be good to go?
Yeah, yeah. As long as it's appropriate time between the permits and, like, we already have the drawings, the quote, and everything, yeah.
Madam Chair, the ordinance allows you guys to grant an extension of 12 months from what would otherwise be your expiry, for one year, 12 months from beyond a year after the resolution was adopted to begin with. So that could take them out as far as, I don't know, the strap.
I think it's November, is it?
Yeah, November 8th, 2025 is the latest possibility.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that should be more than enough, yeah. I was ready to start, but I think we were already at the date, and it wouldn't have been completed, like, I think she knew the process better.
So you're confident that if you grant a 12-month extension, that that will cover what you need to start this project?
Absolutely.
And just so you know, the court does grant a 12-month extension. If you don't start within that 12-month period, that, the longest they can give you is a 12-month extension, so at that point, you have to come in with a whole new application and start basically start from scratch.
You can't get a double extension.
Yeah, no, I got it. My little one is too little. The college process.
College process is a bear.
Yes.
Are there additional questions from the board?
You have it contracted already, or is it just?
No, we got the price codes. We didn't sign it, but we did get the price codes.
And you've talked to the contractor that you talked to?
Oh, yeah, everything was already done, but it was, I think our deadline was like November itself, like this week itself, so even if I would have started the permit, but since the construction wouldn't have began, so that's why they recommended that let me just file the extension, but yeah, everything is all lined up. It was just, the time was too close, yeah.
Okay. Anything else for us?
No, thank you. I appreciate, and I apologize, but I didn't realize it. That was so tedious.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to lay out what's before the board?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Board members, I'm for you for your consideration. This is just a resolution I put together that would memorialize a 12-month extension as is drafted here. As I understand it, actually, if you look at the front page, if I can take you back a year to when this application was initially heard, the applicant initially came in proposing, I'm sorry, the applicants came in proposing block coverage ratio of about, it was 19.79%? Let's flip back to the board. There was a motion. Alright, see, 19.74, they amended their proposal during the hearing, and the first page of that resolution notes that they were going to be removing patio area in order to get down to 19% as opposed to 19.74. So just highlighting that, and that's really about it. The, it's a pretty low standard they have to demonstrate, just that they were prevented, directly or indirectly, from proceeding with the project because of delays beyond their control, and the ordinance gives you a lot of latitude to determine what is good cause and what, you know, what constitutes sufficient, so it's about it, no show.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any comments from the board or a mention, a motion to deny or grant this extension?
Madam Chair, I motion to grant the extension of time not to exceed 12 months.
Thank you. I'll second. Thank you. Ms. Baumann, Mr. Tancredi?
All right, Ms. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi?
Yes.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Chairwoman Juniors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think in expectation of that vote, we have a drafted resolution that was circulated in advance that grants the 12-month extension that was just motioned. So can I get a motion to approve? The resolution is drafted.
Still moved?
Thank you, Ms. Pedici.
Actually, Madam Chair, real quick.
Sorry.
My apologies. Last, last page, be it further resolved, that is spelled incorrectly.
Where's that, sir?
Right in the middle. Be it further resolved in bold. It's resolve led?
Resolve led.
I don't think that's a real word.
Yes.
So that's the only change I would, I'd suggest.
Yeah, that's a good change.
I approve it with the correction.
Thank you, Ms. Pedici.
I motion to approve it with correction.
Thank you.
Miss Tancredi.
Thank you, Mr. Tancredi.
Glad we resolved it, resolved that one.
Ms. Kiefer, you want to do a vote on that one?
Ms. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi?
Yes.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Juniors?
Yes. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is completeness in public hearing. The first one is CSN NJRE LLC, ZB 24018.
Yes, Madam Chair. So as I understand it, and I believe applicant's counsel is here if he wants to say anything, I'm not going to put you on the spot for it, I'm just offering to, if you want it, but as I understand it, notice was effective as to being published. It was also effective as to property owners who lived in Bernardsville. It's a property that's kind of on the border of the township, but certified mail notice wasn't sent to the property owners in Bernards Township, and so the applicant needs to renotice to them, so will be carrying it with no further notice required to the parties that already received it and by the newspaper, just requiring that notice be sent to the property owners in Bernards Township.
That is accurate.
Okay, great.
There we go.
Thank you so much.
Moving right along.
Right, so that's the announcement. If you're here for the CSN NJRE LLC application, this is going to be carried to our, towards next meeting. What's the date on that?
Not the next one, but the next one.
I'm sorry.
Two forward.
It's going to be, this is going to be carried to December 4th, yes, December 4th, I'm sorry.
Okay, alright.
December 4th, our regular meeting, December 4th.
Right. So again, if you're here for the CSN NJRE hearing, it's going to be carried to December 4th, 7:30 PM here in the municipal building. Subject to the further notices I just put forth a couple minutes ago.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 7B, which is the Gruber Family Trust, I think, Gruber and Gruber Family Trust, which is ZB 24013. Ms. Zelli?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant officially, I guess, would be Gruber Family Trust, which is the owner of the property. In person would be John and Holly Gruber, who are both here this evening. This is regarding 131 West Oak Street in Baskin Ridge. It's your block 1405, Lot 2, in your R7 residential zone. This is kind of a unique situation. We don't have too many use variances involving single-family homes, but that's what we have tonight. The applicants are seeking a conditional use variance to continue the use of an existing apartment located on the second level of a detached garage, and to permit the continued occupancy of the same by their son, who is also here with us this evening. Accessory apartments are conditionally permitted uses in the R7 zone pursuant to Section 21-12.3H of your zoning ordinance entitled apartment within a single-family residence. However, the applicants are unable to comply with two of the conditions set forth in the ordinance, specifically condition number one, which requires the apartment to be limited to one apartment and within the physical residence itself. And then condition number six, which is that the occupants of the apartment shall be limited to the mother, father, son, daughter, brother, sister, grandparent, in any degree, and/or grandchild in any degree, together with their respective spouses and children, of one of the principal occupants of the single-family residence. In this case, the single-family residence is rented out to a third party, but the applicant's son is in the garage or in the apartment in question. So we have kind of a variation on the theme that the ordinance permits. I would argue that the, one of the intents of having this situation is that you have some control over what's going on on the premises, and it's not just a, you know, two-family rental situation, and I think in this situation, we do have that ability, but we'll put on testimony to explain the situation in a little more detail. I just have one witness this evening. It's going to be John Gruber, and unless you have questions for me, move forward.
We're ready.
Okay. John, if you want to come up and go under oath?
Real quick, Madam Chair, I'll just mention, because I, I left it to you a second ago, I found the notice of this application to be sufficient, it was timely served, and the content was sufficient, it was sent to owners of property, with the two, subject property by certified mail on October 25th, and also published in the Bernardsville News on October 24th, and the applicant also obtained a waiver of notice from Baskin Ridge Fire Company, so in my legal opinion, the board is jurisdiction here deciding.
Thank you.
Okay. When they're ready, I'll swear in for them, as well as the board professionals. Okay, can I get, all three gentlemen, please raise your right hands for me. Thank you very much. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Gruber.
Hi.
Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
John Gruber, and would that be the address?
Your actual address, where you live, yes.
Okay. 253 Hanover Drive in Costa Mesa, California.
And we're here this evening discussing 131 West Oak Street here in Baskin Ridge, and who or what owns that property?
Gruber Family Trust.
And what is your relationship to the Gruber Family Trust?
I'm trustee, one of the trustees.
The other being your wife?
Other being Holly, my wife, yes.
And when did the trust purchase the property?
In June 2023.
And for what purpose?
Well, my son was working, is working at CoAction, which is a Morris Town Insurance Company, and he was working out of, he was living out of town, and we wanted to, he wanted to move closer, and we sort of all put our heads together, and what can we do, and so we were looking for a place to live, and this house came up, and it seemed to fit the bill, so he didn't need a full house, and we purchased the house with the intent of having my son move into the back unit over the garage.
And the main house is rented out to a third party, is that accurate?
The main house is rented out to a third party.
And would you describe, start with the main house, please, what kind of rooms does it have, and how big is it?
It is, it has, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath. It has a basement, total square footage, I, I don't know, but I know it's, it's down, it's, it's in the package. I don't exactly know, but it's basically, it's a two-story house.
And to be clear, there is no apartment within the single-family house, correct?
That is correct. No apartment in the house, in the main house.
And then the only other structure on the property is, is that the detached garage?
It is a detached garage, yes.
Okay, and would you describe to the board what's on each level of that building?
Okay, the garage is on the ground floor. It's a two-car garage, an interior stairway that goes up to a second floor. Second floor is basically a one-bedroom apartment, and it has a small kitchen and a little front room, and then it has a separate bedroom, and off of the bedroom, there is a separate bathroom, and that's it.
And the buildings that you, as you've described them, are unchanged from when you purchased, is that correct?
Correct. There has been no improvement whatsoever, or change.
And there's no proposed improvement as part of this application? We're solely dealing with the ability to use the buildings, is that correct?
That's correct.
You have several photographs in front of you that the board actually has already.
Okay.
What I'd like you to do is take each one, one at a time, tell us which one you're looking at. I believe they're lettered as opposed to numbered.
Okay.
If you would, just tell the board what each one represents, and please confirm that it's still accurate today.
Okay, photo A, this is what I'm looking at.
We have a thing.
So you can see the front of the house. It's the house on the left, because there's a couple, the next-door neighbor is, you can see in the picture, but the full house, it's obscured by the trees, but that's a two-story house, and you can see sort of through the driveway, there's a garage in back. And that's the way we purchased it, and that's the way it is today.
May I ask, did you purchase it with the tenant already living in the house?
No.
Were you aware of the restrictions on this when you purchased the house, or was anyone, did anybody tell you, or did you inquire about anything about this?
I was not aware. I was told by the seller essentially that we, there's no sort of guarantees on this. We're not providing you with any sort of guidance or direction, sort of a buyer beware kind of a thing.
Did you inquire to the town what the status was, like, anything about it?
No.
And the garages that we're looking for, who has access to the garages on the first level?
When you say who has access to it, you mean?
The tenants, or your son, or?
My, my son is the one that utilizes the garage.
Well, okay, is that a two, is it two garages?
It is two.
Two cars?
It is two car.
Okay, but right now, only your son can use those garages?
Well, I don't think, well, yes, he's only, he's the only one using it. Could the other person in the front of the house use it? I'm sure if he asked, I, it's, there isn't, it's sort of a, you know.
Okay, so it's not hard and fast.
There's nothing hard and fast.
Right now, only your son uses those garages?
Right.
And, and I guess, do the other tenants in the main house just park in that driveway?
Yes, there is one driver who is a, who is the tenant, who's a, I don't know, an IT professional, and he has a daughter, and they live in the house, and there's one car that is utilized in there, in the front house.
Does your son use the garage to park his car?
My understanding is he does, yes.
And if you enter the garage, does that mean you automatically have access to the apartment above?
The, I believe there's a door that separate, there's two doors. There's a, if you can look on the photo B, there's a, there's a sort of a door on the left, uh, that is a door that will go directly into the stairwell. And I believe there's a door, um, that separates, uh, the garage and you can enter from the garage into the, um, the, the, the landing of the, um, stairwell.
But it's constructed in a way that there's still privacy, meaning the person that's residing in the house could actually use the garage without accessing the apartment?
Yes.
If you would just, uh, continue through the group of photos.
Okay, so, um, B is the garage. As you can see, it's, the, the first level is the garage and the second level is the, uh, apartment. Um, photo C is the rear of the garage. Photo D is the rear of the house. So if you were to look out the front of the apartment, you would see the rear of this house on photo D. Moving on to photo D, that's the living space of the. I'm sorry, E, I made a mistake, E as in Eric. Um, you can't really see the kitchen here. You can see the, the, the sort of the range there on the very left of the photo, but that's the kind of the sitting room, the front room. When you, when you go up the stairwell, you go in the, the front door, as it were, of the apartment. This is the first room you see. And again, you can't really see very well the, the kitchen area. It's, it's very small, but, uh, it's sort of to the left and, and back.
So it's a, it's a living kitchen combined area, it's not a, kitchen's not a separate?
Yes, correct.
Can I ask you on photo D, is that taken from the viewpoint of the garage?
Sorry, D as in dog?
Yes, the back of the house.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the garage looking at the back of the house.
Yeah, so if you were to look at on photo E, as in Eric, if you looked out the window, that is the back of the house that you would be looking at.
Mr. Gruber, question, if you hadn't thought to ask the town about the disposition of such an apartment, what prompted your visit here tonight?
I, what is the last part of your question?
What prompted your visit here tonight?
Why are you requesting the variance? How did you find?
How, how did, yeah, how did it come about, right?
We were notified by, um, the, uh, code officer, who, uh, indicated that there was a code that said historically that this property had, uh, conditional use or a variance, to my understanding, and that it was, uh, it, it ended, uh, at the, uh, disposition of the house by the owner. The owner that had owned this house had been in this house, um, fifty years, maybe, and she was, uh, the survivor, the last surviving member of, of her family and, um, she was, she's an older lady, maybe, I think, maybe mid-fif- eighty-five or something and, um, I lost my train of thought.
I think, uh.
You're, you're explaining how you came to?
I think you answered the question.
Oh, yeah, so, so she, they, in my understanding, she told me the whole story, you know. They, in nineteen eighty, they, they had built this and, uh, went through the whole program and, um.
And for whom did she use it? Who was using the apartment?
She, who was using it was her mother, I think, at the time. So this was about nineteen eighty, so that makes sense, you know, time-wise. And then at some point in time, her mother passed away.
And just to make the connection between some of the additional information that, uh, Mr. Schley had uncovered and is in, in his memo, in addition to what we had in the application, uh, Ms. Glazare, G L A Z A R, is the person from whom you purchased, correct?
That's correct.
And that is the same family that obtained the, uh, variances, uh, back in the late seventies and early eighties. Uh, I can also add, I did speak with Ms. Keteritz directly to find out a little bit more information about why this was brought up at the time. She said the tax office actually reached out to her, uh, and said, you know, there's an apartment on the property, you need to look into that, and that's what led to, ultimately to us being here tonight. Can I just take us through the last couple of photos?
Can I, so, can I have one more question? On, does your son work from home?
Uh, no, he, he works for CoAction, um, insurance company, which is in Morris Town. And, um, I think there's, you know, like it is today, there is some remote work, but I do know he, uh, goes in to work at least three, maybe four days a week. Uh, he's required to be in the office.
And he's currently residing there and has since you purchased the property?
Essentially, yes, and when you, I, I don't know exactly, but yes, more or less since we purchased the property.
Just for the record, he's not a trustee of the family trust?
He is currently not a trustee of the family trust.
Nobody else lived in the apartment, though, during your ownership before you?
No, we, this was, yeah. It was, it's really, you know, the, the, the concept was he would live in it and it made sense. It's, it's ten minutes from where he works and it's a beautiful place to live and it, it, it just sort of, everything came together and that was the concept.
Did you have, ever have any intention of moving in yourself to the main house? Coming back from California?
If I were to come back from California, I would certainly want to live in the main house.
That wasn't, that wasn't the initial.
I'm not sure.
Not the plans, though, is that?
That's not the plan.
That's not what.
No, I, I, no.
Is, um, is the apartment only lived in by one person, your son, right now? Does he share it with anybody else?
No, no.
The current tenants, they have a lease with you or is it month-to-month? Or how do you, how do you rent that house?
The front house?
The front house, yeah.
It, there is a lease. It, it, we had a, uh, it's, it's a formal lease and it, uh, started out as a year and currently it is a month-to-month lease because we've passed the year mark and I haven't, um, you know, established an extension.
Madam Chair, do you mind asking a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Gruber, um, in case I, how long have you envisioned your son staying in this apartment for? Is this like a, like a long-time residence for him or is this a, a short-term thing?
Um, my, uh, understanding is it's, it's long-term. He's twenty-seven years old and, uh, he's, uh, in, he's an actuary and he is a professional and I imagine, just like anybody else, he'll, he'll keep working there and continuing in his place of residence for some time. Uh, I don't, there's no end.
To the future, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if this was, you know, a couple-year thing or, you know, it's a long, you know.
I think it could be longer term.
No state prices, I wouldn't be surprised, so. Mr. Gruber, let me cut to the chase a little bit on that issue. Do you understand that if the board were to grant this application, uh, there would most likely be a condition that either your son or perhaps another immediate family member of yours, uh, it would only apply to those individuals? And it would not be a situation where you would be able to then rent it if you were to leave or another family member did not come in? You would not have the ability to rent it out to another third party, so we'd have two third parties on the property.
I, I understand that a hundred percent and that's not the intention at all.
So you would stipulate to that as a condition?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
Mrs. Ellie, could you just summarize that condition again for me?
I can, as a matter of fact, I'm going to get to a question.
Okay, sorry, we're totally over the top here. We cut you off and we've been asking questions, apologize for that. So why don't, why don't you go ahead and let me finish?
I think you got maybe two more photos.
Well, I, um. Okay, F, photo F is, um, F as in Frank, that shows the bedroom. Um, and then the door that is opened goes to the bathroom that is, you can't see. Um, and then, uh, but, but photo, it's not a photo, well, it is a photo. G is a sketch of the second-floor, um, flat or apartment. So, uh, I'm trying to, or so you can see, it says where the side yard is. Basically, you have the stairs, they come up and then you open the door and then you, this, this is the kitchen here in the living room that, uh, you could see. And then there's the, uh, you go through the door and there's the bedroom and then there's a separate door that will go into the bathroom.
And did we ask you, did you take these photos that we're looking at?
Yes, yes.
When did you take them? And do they essentially look like things do now, essentially?
Yes, I, um, they look almost exactly like they looked and they were probably taken a few weeks ago. Um, so yes.
Well, they were, well, let's just, just to be clear, they were taken prior to the application because it included that. So it had to be before July eleven?
Okay.
Okay.
But it's, it, it's exactly the way it is in the photos.
Did you speak with any of your neighbors, conversations, especially lots one and three? Have you spoken to any of those neighbors?
Uh.
Have you spoken to any neighbors?
I have not spoken personally. Um, the, the one on the right, uh, I believe my son, it, it's spoken, they're friendly, they're on friendly terms, but I don't think they've spoken about the specific sort of living arrangement. Um, but they share, they share the, the opening of the, I like when they drive in together. There's a, there's a fence that, that bisects the driveway. Um, but they're, they're on friendly terms.
Other than being contacted by the code enforcement, nobody's voiced any complaints about there being two different tenants on the property, one in the main house and one in the garage?
Not, not at all.
Do you know how code enforcement became aware of the situation?
I have no idea, except for I think, didn't you just mention?
Ms. Keteritz, uh, told me that the tax office reached out to her. So I guess when they did their last assessment, they observed that it was an apartment, although that's certainly in the records of the town from when it was constructed. She did not, uh, do it on her own. It was as a result of being, uh, informed and prodded by the tax office. So some of the questions we've already hit on, but just to be clear, uh, to your knowledge, have been no disturbance in parking problems or other impacts on the neighborhood as a result of your son being in the apartment?
None, not, not at all.
If there were any such issue arising from the main house tenancy, uh, do you believe that having your son present on the property would enable you to better address it rather than having to deal with, deal with it yourself from three thousand miles away?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I want to ask you a few questions that relate to the conditions with which we do comply, uh, just so the board is comfortable with that. Uh, Mr. Schley indicates in his memo, based upon the township tax records, that the square footage of the apartment is approximately nineteen percent, excuse me, of the main house square footage, so it's three hundred and twelve square feet of the apartment versus one thousand three thirty-six square feet of the main house. Uh, would you agree with those figures, to your knowledge?
Yes.
Uh, and just for the record, the conditional use requirement is not more than twenty-five percent. Now, of course, it's worded of the home where the apartment is located. I would assume, you know, that's a little different, but in terms of, as analogous as we can get, it's nineteen, so it's only twenty-five. Between the parking area of the, uh, between the parking area that's located between the house and the garage and the two bays of the garage, is there adequate off-street parking to accommodate the occupants of both structures?
Absolutely, yes.
Uh, you're not proposing any physical changes to the exterior of either structure, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, you're not proposing to reduce the size of the apartment or any of its rooms, is that correct?
Correct.
The reason that's relevant for the board's application is there is a requirement that, uh, the size of the apartment comply with FHA regulations. Uh, I will represent, I've tried to find FHA regulations for apartments. I don't think they exist anymore. I think this is a, uh, antiquated statute that just doesn't apply anymore, but it's there, so I wanted to get as much of testimony on the record as I can. But presumably, when the apartment was built, and it was built with the township's approval, uh, whatever was required size-wise would have been achieved and has not changed. Again, now, Mr. Gruber, if the board were to approve this application, do you understand and do you stipulate that in the event that your son were to vacate the apartment and not be replaced by a different member of your immediate family, this approval would become null and void?
I understand, yes.
And you understand this requirement for annual reporting to the township, uh, to the township zoning official relative to this apartment? And you agree to comply with that requirement if the board were to approve this application?
Yes.
I have nothing further from Mr. Gruber at the moment. If there are questions, uh, the board will want to hear. His son is present. I don't know if the testimony would be duplicative or not, but if there's questions to be rather heard directly from him, he is here this evening.
He's, I'll point him out, that's my son, Caden.
I have another question. When the house was inspected before buying it, they inspected the garage and the apartment as well? So that you know all of the safety elements are up to date?
Yes, they did. Uh, all of the, we had a, you know, the inspectors come out and do a physical inspection and, uh, everything we did, uh, was in good condition to the, to our satisfaction and what it, what, what wasn't, the, the seller, you know, brought it up to a satisfactory condition. I don't remember the details, but there wasn't a whole lot that we had issues with.
Has there ever been any issue where your son was able to step in sort of as a representative of the ownership?
Well, yes, as a matter of fact, he, he, um, deals with some of, like, what I might call a property management issues, like trash issues and, um, i- if there's any sort of thing that needs to be paid jointly, he'll pay it and then go to the, to the tenant and, and get reimbursed. Um, a- any number of things that come up on a regular basis that he, that does. Uh, he has communication with, uh, his name is Grant, is the tenant and, and they have a good relationship and they, they take care of whatever the issues are.
If there are any repairs necessary to the main house, would Caleb take care of making those arrangements?
He, uh, it's, that's his, his responsibility, basically, yeah. I mean, ultimately, it's mine, but, but he takes care of, of all the issues that come up.
Do you think at any time he would move into the main house? Or is that just totally Google?
I, I, I can't, I mean, I don't know, that's not what we're, we're contemplating right now, but I can, I mean, possibly if, I mean, that's not what the objective is at this point. Things change, I, I, I don't know, I can't envision.
Does he have a rental agreement with the family trust?
Uh, no, not formally. It's a verbal.
Does he have a management agreement with the family trust to manage the property?
Uh, no, no, it's not a formal thing. But I, the, the family trust is comprised of me and my wife.
Does he get paid by the family trust to manage the property?
No, no.
Does he pay?
Except, I.
He, he has, he's given residential. Does he pay the utilities on the apartment? Is it separate or is it combined with the, the, the main home? Is it all, all the utilities together or are they separate?
Can I ask a question?
We could bring him up.
We should bring him up anyway, because I, I think I have a couple of questions for him.
Okay, okay.
So you could defer.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Gruber, why he's up here this time? Is there any questions from the public for Mr. Gruber? Your son's name?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John, why don't you have a seat next to me?
Okay.
Caleb, you're on.
Hi, Caden.
Caden, I'm sorry. Mr. Gruber also, so could you raise your right hand? Do you swear at war firm that the testimony about the, about the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please proceed. Do you give it and, and spell your name for us and we make sure that we get it right?
Yeah, it's C A D E N.
And can we ask you, Mr. Gruber, to just speak right into the microphone so that we make sure we pick it up?
Yes, yes.
So you, you've heard your father's testimony, obviously?
Yes.
Uh, so let's, uh, go through some of the questions and, uh, the board will jump in also, so.
In regard to the utilities?
Uh, we'll start, we'll start, since that's the most recent, go ahead. How does the utilities work?
The electric is metered separately. The electric is metered separately between the main house and the apartment. The water is not. So each month I pay the bills for all the utilities. Uh, I pay the apartment electric and the main house electric and I pay the water. I have the tenant reimburse me for the main house electric, which is billed, um, on the meter. So the, there are two different accounts within Jersey Central. And the tenant is charged for two-thirds of the, um, water utility bill. And I pay for one-third of the water utility bill.
Have you discussed this application with any of your neighbors?
No, I have not.
Do you have a relationship at all or connection with any of the neighbors? You know them?
I do not know them well, but we wave to each other.
Has there ever been any kind of a disturbance or parking dispute or anything with any of the neighbors regarding your living there?
No sort of parking dispute.
Has there ever been any kind of disturbance?
No disturbance.
Anything, any kind of disturbance related to the main house's occupants that you might have had to be involved in?
None whatsoever.
How often are you working from home as opposed to going up to the office in Marston?
About twice a week, sometimes once a week. I will work from home.
And granted that none of us could probably predict with accuracy what's in our future, but what is your intention at this point in terms of how long do you foresee yourself living in this apartment as opposed to somewhere else?
I envision a timescale exceeding two years at a very minimum, but if not more, several years, generally speaking.
I don't have any other questions.
Are there any other bills that you pay? Did you mention trash?
Yes, I, um, pay for trash. And obviously, there's some payment associated with the municipal, uh, you know, recycling that is done. And so I, I pay, or I guess that is via, via taxes, but, um, yeah, I do, I do pay for trash.
Do you share a garbage can?
Yes, yes.
Share one?
We share, but the tenant does not pay anything for waste, um, collection.
Okay.
And you and the tenant have your own accounts for phone, internet, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, there are separate accounts. There's also in the rear, uh, unit, there is an oil tank. And the main house, there is a gas line. So the, the heating and systems are separate and they're managed separately. I have no involvement with the tenant's, um, payment of the gas utilities. And I independently deal with the oil.
Can I ask you, where did you live before you lived in this apartment?
I lived in Dobbs Ferry, New York, in Westchester.
And was it a job change that part you hear?
No, I was working here, but I was commuting. So the primary incentive to moving to this area was to reduce the commute.
And the complaints to your dad about the commute?
You don't have to. Can I ask a question about parking?
Yes.
Where does there be a parking?
Yeah.
You had two or three cars in there?
Yes, so.
Drive straight in?
In these, in this, in the center region, you can see how the driveway is narrow initially, but it, it fans out once it gets, gets to the rear unit. In between the, there's a, there's a lawn area which is flanked by a, a garden of sorts. There's enough room rather easily for two cars to park outside of the garage without obstructing access to the garage. So right now, there is only one car that parks within a space that is, it's, there are two, two spots essentially to park external to the garage. So I use the garage presently and the tenant, um, parks external to the garage. We've never had any sort of issues with vehicle congestion. There's, there's actually quite a bit of space to maneuver, um, two vehicles. I would say even three vehicles would be quite manageable within that space.
Do you pull in and then go to the left to park over here?
Yes.
Car would park in the garage?
Yes.
You need to pull out, you reverse all the way back to the main road?
We have different styles. So sometimes I, I reverse, but he, he Y-turns so that he backs in. So he's always going, um, you know, out. He's, he's not reversing into the street. Sometimes I opt to reverse into the street. Sometimes I opt to do the Y-turn myself.
But he has a blockage garage because you're parked in the garage?
No, there's never any, any blockage.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? We're going to have one, so stay right there. Do you mind just moving a little bit so that we can, um?
Title's signed 172 Riverside Drive. Do you pay rent for the property?
I do not pay rent.
Concerning the, the garage, do you park your car inside the garage?
Yes, I park inside the garage.
Do you have, um, carbon monoxide detectors and smokes in your apartments?
Yes, I have both smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors inside the home.
It's just unusual to have a living space in a garage. Normally, the owner of the house and then, I know, it's a comment, I'm sorry. But basically, that's the question is, um, what prevents you from moving out and renting to somebody else?
More of a legal question, honestly, that there would be, there would be a condition disapproving that would be an enforcement issue with the zoning officer. A variance would be done. And that would be against the code. We understand that that would be a condition.
Okay. I'm good.
Thank you.
Does this kind of follow to the rental question? Your responsibilities at the property are to maintain the property?
Yes.
And for that, you're getting free rent?
Yes.
So effectively, you're getting paid to be the property manager on the site?
In essence, that is the, that is the agreement. Yes.
Essentially a superintendent of the property?
I don't do any repairs per se, but I contact individuals to do repairs when they come up. I am in contact frequently with the tenant. The tenant will inform me if there are issues and I do my best to promptly resolve them. There is landscaping work which is done on a regular basis to maintain the property. And I, um, manage any sort of billing associated with the tenant's rental agreement or any, um, you know, third parties who, who do work on the property.
Do you show the property if there was needed to be lease? Do you, if the current tenant moved out, do you hire a property person to find renters or do you do that yourself?
The renter was obtained via an agent. So I was not involved per se in the, um, in the showing of the property. In the future, perhaps something like that could take place, but in, in this case, it was done via an agent.
Any other questions from the public?
We have no further testimony to present. I am mindful of the fact that this is a D. variance requiring five votes and we only have six members, I believe. So if possible, if we could do some kind of a straw poll or something, you give me some guidance as to whether I might need to request a postponed vote or anything like that, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Zola, real quick, before we get to it, I did, there was one condition, or one comment, Mr. Schley's memo wasn't particularly addressed. Uh, that was the, uh, his, his proposed condition that the, uh, the application will be subject to review and approval of the sewage authority? Would you be complying with that? Just, just making sure.
I always advise my clients to do things that are required by law to do, so no problem.
Just, just making sure.
Okay, and then I just want to make sure also from Mr. Quinn's memo?
There are no action items?
No action items, so everything was covered?
Other than the testimony, really.
Okay, and I saw that there were no environmental concerns on this particular application, so.
So could I try to summarize?
Yeah, you can. I, I think Mr. Zelli's asking for, you know, he's trying to get a better sense of kind of how we're thinking about things so that he can best manage his case.
Right.
So why don't you please go ahead and summarize? We're not in official deliberations at this time, but I guess if there's anything that people want to say at this time, that might be helpful to facilitate the application, um, might be time to say it.
We have to figure out that right now, the condition in the ordinance says they don't comply because of the, the own, the apartment, you got a third party in there. So if they don't meet it, so I think we have to decide as a board, if we're going to go forward, are we going to impose a different type of condition? That will allow the current situation? So I think in that sense, we have not. We have to discuss that, what type of particular condition we're going to apply, apply if we want, you know, if we're going to improve the, the, uh, app, the application of what type of condition we want to apply.
Right, well, to that, to your point, Mr. Pedigi, I, what I was going to do is try to tee that up for you because, just, let, let me just go ahead. I don't want to, I don't want to get.
It's just, let me ask you if you would just briefly, if it would be beneficial to the board for me to go through the planning aspects briefly? I can do that.
Sure.
I was just going to attempt to explain that. Yeah.
By all means.
Let, let me tee it up first, Mr. Zola, then you can come back. We'll, we can try to work through this together, so. So basically, let me try to set the stage here. So the applicant here is seeking a conditional use variance, right? So the ordinance permits these accessory apartments, provided they meet, you know, certain conditions, right? So I had, I've at least identified three, if we need two, maybe three different conditions that the applicant is intending to deviate from. And that's what they need, the zoning or the var, the variance for. So the first condition is, you were saying, Mr. Pedigi, uh, this is, this is at section, uh, 21 dash 12.3 H of the, of the ordinance subsection one of that section, uh, states that the number of apartments within the single-family residence shall be limited to one and shall be located within the principal building. Here, the applicant's, you know, seeking approval. It is intending to deviate from that condition in the sense that the apartment is not in the principal building, but it's in a separate building, a detached garage. So that's the first condition they're deviating from here. The second one is that, uh, this is at subsection six, the occupants of the apartment shall be limited to the father, mother, son, daughter, brother, sister, grandparent and/or grandchild, together with their respective spouses and children of one of the principal occupants of the single-family residence. Here, the proposed occupant of the apartment is the applicant's son, but he's not related to the occupants of the apartment. The final one, to the extent it's even necessary, because this might be altered by the condition related to occupancy with the subsection seven there, which states that at such time as the apartment becomes unoccupied or at such time as the occupants of the apartment do not, no longer bear the requisite relationship to the principal occupant, uh, the conditional use shall terminate. So I think that, I only reference that because the, from the jump street here, they're not, um, related to the, you know, there's no blood relationship between the principal occupant of the house and, and the accessory apartment occupant. So those are the three conditions, Mr. Zola, that I, at least I think you would need relief from, but if you do.
No, I think that's a fair assessment.
Yeah. So that's, that's kind of the tea off. So I don't know, did you want to try to give, throw some planning groups out there, representations, I should say.
I wouldn't even think of testifying personally.
Intentions, representations and arguments.
So it is a D. three use variance. It falls under the Coventry Square standard, which is to determine whether the property can accommodate any problems that are designed by the conditions of the ordinance to prevent. And what you have here is a situation where this has honestly been going on, fully sanctioned, uh, for, for multiple decades. It's kind of interesting. One of the conditions that we can't satisfy is, is the fact that the unit is not within the home. And if you look back at Mr. Schley's memo, which was interesting, he pointed out that, you know, that kind of came up as a, as a area of clarification, I think specifically with regard to this property. And I think the enforcement ever since this property was addressed by the town has been such that we really do mean that, we really do expect it to be in the building. So if it's not, you're going to need the variance. Back at that time, in 1980, I believe it was, uh, they took a different approach and said, you know, it's anywhere on the property is all we need. So that has changed. So now we definitely need to be seeking that condition. But as a practical matter, uh, this apartment has been sanctioned by the town, uh, up until the time that, uh, the, his, uh, super name is Glazars, uh, mother, uh, stopped occupying the apartment. So we have a situation here that's a little bit different, just in terms of the actual relationship. But as I stated at the beginning, uh, if we look at what the problem is that's being designed to be prevented, uh, it's to make sure that we're not dealing with a two-family, two different third parties type of situation. That there's going to be some responsibility on the property by, by ownership. And it's, I think, fair to say that when the ordinance was passed, the assumptions that people are, are living there and it's, it's, it's their house and it's an accessory that goes for a typical mother, daughter, or the, in this case, the mother of the apartment. So this is obviously different, uh, but the same concept still applies, was that we still have a member of the owner's family, uh, on the site. Just, it's just the opposite. He's in the apartment as opposed to the main house and it may be the other way around. So the problems that the ordinance is designed to combat are being accommodated and will continue to be accommodated. And by agreeing to the conditions that are similar to the rest of the statute or to the ordinance, uh, we're dealing with and avoiding any kind of, uh, negative detrimental effect on your zone plan or your master plan or on the public welfare. There is no indication whatsoever that, uh, there was any problems as a result of this apartment existing either before, when it was fully sanctioned, or now, uh, when we have a certain different, uh, different relationship with the parties. It's not causing any kind of problem. I think it's still fully consistent, uh, with what was envisioned at this point. And again, there would be a condition, we understand that, that if the existing relationship were to terminate as the ordinance provides with the relationship that it, uh, covers, uh, that it would be discontinued and that would be the end of the variance at that point. So I believe under Coventry Square standard, uh, the site does accommodate the problems and therefore the board can grant this variance appropriately.
Is that it, Mr. Todd? Okay. So, um, so I think at this point, it'd be helpful if the board, you know, deliberated to some extent prior to taking, uh, a vote, but maybe if we can deliberate amongst ourselves, uh, on the merit of this application, that would be helpful. And then we'll see if we need to make some further comments.
Mr. Schley made this comment in number four, number four G. So how are we going to? Are we discussing four G?
Time to shift real quick, before we go any further forward. I just want to ask, so we're professionals. Did you guys have anything that you needed to address or you guys both satisfied?
No. I had the question.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Pedigi, you were asking about four G on Mr. Schley's memo?
Yeah.
Okay.
So here's kind of the tricky part about this, if you want me to step in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the issue we have to discuss because essentially, the current situation is not in compliance with four G.
Right, so by granting this variance, you're in essence modifying the concept of the ordinance for this property?
Correct.
So the condition that we fully recognize would exist if this were approved, would follow the same concept, which would be that once this relationship would end, in other words, once no family member of the owner were occupying that apartment, the variance would, would discontinue. So it would not be permitted for a non-related person to occupy.
Right, but we do need some type of a variance of, uh, IDG. Because IDG itself, there's, there's no compliance right now.
Right, and that's what, well, that's what, that's just somebody asking. He identified that as the third variance and I, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
Identifying it that way, that's fine. Right, right. So, Miss Pedigi, just so the, so with this conditional use variance, I was, I was. Right, right. So Ms. Pedici, just so the, so with this conditional use variance, honestly, this is a little tricky even for me. The, so what the applicant here needs a variance from is, is the, those three things that I summarized with you, right? So basically, they're intending, they're proposing to not comply with those conditions? And that's, the variance is to allow them to not have to comply with those three things.
Okay.
If that makes any sense. So then, at that point, then it's up to the board to decide what a condition, what if any condition should be imposed beyond that, if they feel that one or any are necessary.
Would you want to hit specifically with the, what the variance should be on the condition?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Or what the stipulation?
The stipulation.
What is exactly the condition?
Okay.
Right, yeah, yeah, of course, we, you know, if there's a condition, then yes, obviously, we'd be, we're going to mention it and have it memorialized. I think that the tricky situation here, at least to an extent, is that with, with condition seven, I'm sorry, not condition seven, subsection seven, that's four G on the memo. This is kind of where I'm struggling here, because, at least to an extent, the, the owner of the property isn't the Grubers, it's the family trust.
Right. So the modification that you would be in effect granting by the variance would be to change the relationship that's permitted from being an immediate family member of the owner, I'm sorry, of the primary residence occupant, to being a immediate family member of the owner. So, and so therefore, the exact same concept, and you could probably almost pirate the wording from the ordinance, and just, it would be changed from occupant to owner.
Let me take a stab at that. So.
But the owners of the trust.
Right. That's kind of, I guess.
So you have to say, is it, are, is it just beneficiaries of the trust? Would that be more appropriate?
Trust.
Uh, well.
I guess if you want forever to say that.
Yeah.
That's the problem, right.
This is not a family, this is. We would, we would.
Well, I think.
We would have no objection whatsoever to it being an immediate family member of John and Holly Gruber.
Yeah, Mr. Zelli was just about to ask, is the intent here to make this of an approval in perpetuity, where a new owner could come in and they're, you know, let's say it's a different couple and their son, they want to occupy? Or do you want this approval to just apply solely to these particular owners?
Well, now you're getting into a different legal issue than, than we don't need to.
Or in a whole lot, there's a whole lot of legal issues here.
You know, there's, as you know, there's recent case law determining to what degree that you can limit approvals to specific people.
Exactly.
So if we envision, let's envision just for the sake of argument, that this is basically a mother-daughter situation.
Right.
And there were, there was a restriction that once that situation ended, that the variance in place would go away.
Right.
If you had buyers coming in with an in-law who also wanted a mother-daughter situation, as I understand the case law, you would be able to turn that down, because the, the use follows the property.
Right.
So you can't limit it to individual people. You can't say it can only be the Gruber family.
Right.
But if somebody comes in and wants to use it differently, that's a whole different story.
Right.
But I think we want to avoid having this situation before us. Again, somebody else buys the property and wants to let their kid live in the house, you know, the, the apartment above the garage, and rent the main house to somebody else, and then we're in the same situation. And I don't think we want that. I don't think we want this to recur. This should be like a one-time thing. I understand you bought the house not knowing this was the situation, that you're supposed to be, the, the relative in the apartment is supposed to be, like, the person in the apartment is supposed to be related to the resident in the house. You did not know that.
Correct.
Okay. So we don't want this situation happening again. This is an exception. I think this is a hardship, which is why we have to really consider this. The house was purchased with an understanding that they would be able to have their son reside in this apartment and still rent out the main residence. And they didn't know, and we don't, but we don't want this to happen again. So we have to be careful how we craft this, that we're not going to have the same situation before us.
And I disagree with the hardship, because this wasn't a, you know, a family moving into a house saying, oh, I didn't know something. It's an investment property that was a turnkey investment property to make money, and to have someone live in the property free of rent. That's my child. You know, it's, it's a way different situation than a hardship of a family moving in and not knowing something, which we've heard before. This is a, if you're doing an investment property, you're doing research, you're looking at everything, you're making sure that you can make money on this property, you're making sure, you're going through everything if you're doing an investment property, and that's what this is. It's a trust doing an investment. It's not a family buying a house for a kid, I'm sorry, a, a family member of, of living. I, I see completely.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, I also didn't see it as a hardship. You know, I'm not sure, you know, it's bought. I, I don't know what the intention of it is. Maybe it is to make money, maybe it isn't. You know, I, I don't know what the intention is, but I do think.
If the board would like testimony about that, we could present it because.
I do think there is, I think I heard some testimony, that there was some knowledge that there were no guarantees on whether this is legal or not. So I think it was gone into knowing that there was a risk, that this may not be allowed. And so I, I don't see it as a hardship either.
I, I'm going to say, in my years on the board here, anytime we've granted occupancy of an accessory building, the primary owner, if the owner lived in the primary residence. And if we did grant that, it was usually a hardship where there may have been an older, an older parent, they had to take in medical reason that, you know, they had to take care of a family member. That was a hardship. I, I don't see any hardship here. I, nothing at all. So I, I don't know how we could approve this.
Well, hardship is not, honestly, it's not part of the analysis.
I mean, essentially, we're creating a two-family property here if we do this. I'm not convinced the site accommodates it. I can see parking issues. And it's not consistent with our zoning rules, the negative criteria for D three, so I, I would not be in favor.
Can I suggest a potential condition? I think, I'm hoping this could be, well, are there two possi-? Let me throw this out there first before I go to the second possibility. So as a condition of approval, this is something that may work. At such time as the apartment becomes unoccupied, or at such time as the occupants of the apartment are not, or are no longer related to, by blood or marriage, the owner or the trustees of the owner of the property, the, this approval shall terminate. Does that make sense? It's kind of a way to not make it particularly, you know, an individual property.
You're trying to make it to the first without making it to the first.
Right, right. I mean, what are the odds you're going to?
My only concern is, like I said, I don't want to do something that's, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Works under that appellate case that came down a few years ago.
Well, this isn't bearing to a particular party or anything. We're just saying the owner or the trustees of the owner of the property in general. So theoretically, you can have another, with that condition, you're going to have a similar situation arise where a couple comes in, you know, just like these.
So, so maybe I wasn't thought, so you were not being specific to the Grubers, you were keeping, okay, then I don't have a problem with that.
Right.
I'm sorry.
I think that might be the best way to solve it. Alternatively, I was going to suggest maybe a time cap on when the use could stop, but I don't think we want to go that way.
What I was going to suggest, another way to deal with the slippery slope, if you will, would be to have a deed restriction setting forth that in the event that it were to terminate, and that a new owner wanted to come in under the same circumstances, they would have to appear to the, in front of the board. I think if we did that by way of deed restriction, it's something that would be permissible.
And what would be the time cap option?
I, I just threw that out there in case.
I know, I'm just asking.
Maybe five years.
Okay, any time cap that we put on it, you could say.
I won't say mine up.
Okay.
We could develop, we could say, purchase, you know, change in ownership and/or five years. Is that what you mean? I'm just asking.
I suppose.
Only because, to enforce this, how would you ever enforce the first thing that you mentioned versus?
It did get enforced.
The one reason this was enforced is because it was change in ownership. So changing ownership is easy. When it's, you know, no one, no one living there or renting anymore, no one's going to check it unless they were complaints.
Right.
So we're not going to require them to provide leases every time there's a new owner or lease, leasing.
Well, they do have to regi- uh, under the ordinance, they do have to register every year.
The lease.
The, this unit, this apartment, has to be annually renewed, registered, whatever term you want to use. That's one of your conditional uses, and, or one of your conditions is one that would be compliant.
The house or the, you know, the garage apartment has to be registered or?
The accessory apartments pursuant to this ordinance have to be annually recertified that they still exist and to keep the town apprised of what's going on.
Right. So you guys would still be complying with all the other conditions of the?
Right.
Right, okay. With that, before we go any further with these conditions, maybe it would be beneficial to have the straw poll before we try to decide on a condition, at least if everybody's in favor of, you know, granting this in concept.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful unless there's other comments from the board that are worth debating. Are you ready to do that?
So I guess, all those who would be in favor of permitting this use, I guess, raise your hands.
Well, what, Ms. Kiefer, why don't you do a straw poll for us?
I'm going to do a formal.
And like, I, I guess the question is, is there a path forward with conditions to allow this, or are you going to be against it? I guess, with, this is not an official vote.
What, what makes it hard is that he's living there now.
Yes.
So there's, there's some, there's some evidence that it's working, and that it's not hurting anybody. And for that, I feel that it's a consideration. My fear is that we would be in this situation again. And I, I think you can tell, we're all very uncomfortable. We're uncomfortable because nobody wants to kick a kid out of the house. But the truth of the matter is, is that it just doesn't fit with our ordinance. And it's hard to think that, you know, this is just going to go on, this can go on and on and on. So that's what's uncomfortable, and I think we don't want to be in that situation again.
And of course, that's why we're talking about crafting conditions if we're, if we're to be approved. Correct.
What, what is the question?
The question is, is there a path forward with conditions to approve this application, or are you going to be against it? Without saying what the conditions are.
All righty.
Let's just go there. Is there a path?
Um, Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Pass.
No. You can say something about conditions if you want, or yes or no, you're a maybe.
Maybe they just have to be restrictive.
Fine, maybe's okay.
The conditions, yeah, I mean.
So that's a yes?
It was a maybe, but yes, he had a yes.
A yes subject to conditions.
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
I'm starting with Mr. Kraus, a yes, kind of sort of with the appropriate restrictions and conditions.
Mr. Tancredi?
No.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Chief, Chairwoman, cheers.
Thank you. I am closer to no, but if, if I was to give it a yes vote, it would have to be extremely restrictive conditions with a time limit that is shorter than five years for me. So I'm, I'm happy to talk about that path forward, but to me, it's no longer than two years. It's enough time to give him another chance to find somewhere else. We're not kicking anybody out on the street. But for me, it's, it's not allowed. Our, our ordinances are very specific with the language in terms of where it needs to be, and we know that there's been some changes there, but specific to the family member of, of the resident, which this just clearly does not fit. So that's my only path forward. So if, if we want to offer something like that, then that's the only way I would consider. Yes, it's really just a temporary, a temporary path.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
What if we tabled this, allow Mr. Sobeyski and I to work together and see if we can come up with a appropriately restrictive proposed condition? And then the interim, that would also allow a seventh member to renew the tape and be eligible to vote. I have no objection. As long as I don't have to fly witnesses back from California.
I would be happy to come back.
You'd come back anyway.
Anybody have a problem with that? No.
Wait, hold on. You're going to come back from California to New Jersey in December or January? Are you crazy? I think so. If everyone's comfortable with proceeding that way, we'll carry this to the next available hearing.
December fourth.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Kiefer, can, may I come back on December fourth?
We have a full document on December fourth. I think I gave you the pending applications list.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
I just don't know what, how much time.
To be honest, as long as Ms. Keteris isn't going to be issuing violations, the timing is not critical in this particular.
That's not my department, though.
My other question is, what happens when it's sitting vacant?
We don't want to go too long.
When it's sitting vacant.
Another consideration, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just quickly, January is tight. I, I don't, do you want to carry it to January or January eighth or?
Mr. Zelli, is, if we carry it to January eighth, is that okay with you?
That's acceptable.
January eighth.
Okay. We will need an extension of time, Mr. Zelli?
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Okay. So December eighth, that's going to be our, I'm sorry, January.
January.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll see you.
All right. So just, just for the record, I'll make it official, this matter's going to be carried to our board's next here, the board's hearing on January eighth, twenty twenty-five? Quarter of the century here, seven thirty PM here in the municipal building. No further notice will be required other by certified mail or by publication.
Right. And, and just to be clear, the board did not vote on this application, and the public will have an opportunity to make a comment at that time.
Understood.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is seven C, which is Joseph and Nicolette Caputo, ZB two four zero one seven.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you? Joseph Caputo, yeah.
Great. Give our lawyer one second.
Sure.
Switching gears here. Okay. So, Mr. Caputo, I'm going to need you to raise your right hand, as well as our board professionals. I'm going to swear all you guys in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony routes provided were the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, great. And what's your address for the record, sir?
Uh, sixty-six South Stonehedge Drive, Baskin Ridge, New Jersey.
Okay. And I'll just point out, Madam Chair, I did review the applicant's notice of this application, found it to be timely served and to be sufficient in terms of its content. It was sent to owners of property within two feet of the subject property on September eighteenth, and published in the Burnet Hill News on September twenty-sixth. So with us in my legal opinion, board is jurisdiction to you here to decide the case.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to tell us what relief you seek?
Sure. So we're asking to construct a fence in the rear of our property. We're asking for a variance for a five-foot fence. We're on a corner lot, so the side of Argyle Way is considered a front yard property. So we wanted to construct a rear fence of five feet, where we would only be up to four feet, so that's what the variance is, is a request for.
Yes. And why do you want it to be five feet?
So we have two young children. Actually, last year, on South Stonehedge, right in front of our house, there was a vehicle accident where somebody died, actually, right in front of our property. So we have two young children at home. We wanted it to be as tall as would make reason. So we know in the rear yard, we can go above four feet, and just because unfortunately our lot is on the corner, we, we're limited there.
You have some pictures in your application. Did you take those?
We did.
And does it essentially look the same, just less green?
Less green.
And you have a picture of a fence in there.
Yes.
Is that what you're thinking about, a type of fence?
Yes. Yeah, so it would be a black aluminum fence with mostly open see-through, so would not be covered where you could see into the back, the rear of the property.
Do you mind taking it, do you have a copy of your photos?
Yes.
Do you mind taking us through your photos and maybe focusing
Yes.
on where this fence is going to be, especially with respect to the two front yards?
Yes. So we provided this survey. In essence, what, we showed the photos for the portion that we, we need the variance for. So I don't have them labeled, but this photo here is looking from the side of the house towards Argyle Way. This is the driveway leading to our garage, where we're constructing, the fence would be from this driveway line here to, we have aphrodisiac trees that are along Argyle Way here, that we're going to place it on the inside of those. So it would be on the inside of those trees, towards the back end of Argyle Way, and then along the back end of the property. Kind of hard to explain otherwise. This photo here is looking towards the rear of the house. Argyle Way is on this side here. These are the aphrodisiac trees I was referring to. The fence would be on the inside of those, so closer to the, to the house. And this is the rear side of the property with Argyle, again, on this side.
So is that part of the fence blocked, you think, from the street?
Yeah, you wouldn't even see it on the, on the street side. So the trees, it would be on the interior of the, the trees. We did, we did speak actually with two of our neighbors, too. Actually, it was labeled 16 and 11, and both of, both of them. That's the Nozier family, and our, at 16, and then 11 are two neighbors that also recently moved into, to that property and have two young daughters as well. So neither of them had voiced any concern about the fence.
So this fence is, I think, exact fence here, or is that, it says example, so I'm just.
Uh, that would be very similar, so, yes, exactly.
So that's what you're purchasing and putting up?
Yes, uh, yes.
I'm only asking, because that was the question, like, is it the exact one, or is there a different model or version?
Yes, no, that would be it. I mean, I, I did bring, in essence, the, the catalog that they provided us. I just brought this here. They're all very similar, but I mean, it's gonna be a little bit.
They're all open?
All open, exactly.
So then, who would?
Exactly, yeah, so they maybe just slide variations to that, but not, it would all be open aluminum fence.
And Dave, the only, the only section that's technically the front yard is, is the section that goes along our Gile Way, correct?
No, everything forward of the house, right. So it's like a U shape. The section along the driveway, the section along the hedge, along our Gile.
Oh, because that's the front yard, I see.
If it's closely to the street, it's behind the house, but, I get it, yeah. To that point, I err in my letter. A hundred and seventy feet I have is what you just said.
Okay.
I did count the return back to the point where the plane of the house intersects the backyard. So it's closer to 250 feet of it is in the front yard.
Okay.
Any other comments for the boards?
No, I mean, I think, kinda the main thing is, we're just asking for an extra foot of fence, in essence, you know, along that, that front side property. You know, otherwise with code, it's gonna be open, easily see into the backyard. You know, the spot where the, where the trees are already, that would be the only spot that would not be visible, but there are trees there, we're not planting. I know there were some questions about vegetation being, we're not planning on doing anything to any agriculture or vegetation and, you know, construction of the fence, four feet or five feet, so.
And the reason for the four feet, or the, the four-foot ordinance is just for massing, correct?
Yeah, openness and air light.
And you're not removing any trees or any?
No.
For this contract?
No, yeah, we're gonna be on the interior side of the Aph, of the Aphrodites on our Gile Way, and on the posterior of the house, there's, there are trees, but we're not, there's no intention to remove any trees in construction of the fence, so.
Mr. Quinn, any?
No, the only comment I had was that the photo isn't dimensioned, so before you, if you're gonna go to the building department, just make sure you have a little cut sheet showing how high your fence is gonna be in the opening. I'm sure whoever's gonna do it for you can give you that cut sheet.
Okay.
You can stay with your application for the fence.
Okay.
In this example, what's the opening? Between the bars, the minimum bars?
Uh, I don't know if they actually label it here.
They're usually about three and a half inches, if there are typical fence like that.
Yeah. I mean, I have pictures of kinda what, I know this is not absolutely to scale, but I.
But the rule is more than 50% open, Ms. Sli?
Right, which, which is what, yeah, so.
You would stipulate to?
Absolutely, yeah. The pic, what we provided there for the board, that's what it's gonna look like, and that's more than 50% open, so.
So, I'll take this as a condition, that the fence you ultimately construct would be substantially similar in terms of appearance to the one that you guys?
Correct, correct.
It would otherwise comply with all the other requirements of the ordinance transparency?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Any additional questions for Mr. Caputo, from the board?
If a new homeowner took down this fence, they'd actually put up the same type of fence? Or could they put up any fence that they wanted to?
If for some reason they wanted to replace the fence, they'd have to replace it in accordance with the board's condition, which would be very similar type of decorative, black aluminum, very open fence.
I mean, what is the, the width between the vertical poles of the fence?
On the fence, I don't know, so we were.
Well, I'm worried about a child could, could kinda peek out of that fence and maybe get stuck.
I don't know. I, I.
I'm not a fence expert, that was my first question.
I have a similar fence that's wider, and it's a pool fence, and it's regulation.
Okay, I mean, I, I'm sure anybody has that fence, but I was, I'm just concerned about child safety.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, honestly, we, we kinda think more safety, keep them in, in the rear of the yard, because our property is quite open, especially on that our Gile side. So we do use it a lot when we're back there with the kids. And like I said, what prompted a lot of this was, just after Christmas last year, there was a fatality right in front of our property from a motor vehicle accident.
The standard height of the fence in this situation, five feet, is that because the manufacturer is five?
No, it, it, they do manufacture four feet. It was more of a request of us just for five feet, just to give a little extra height on the fence.
They could have any gates?
Yes, so, um, on this, more the south side of the property where Caputo's, the name is, there's gonna be about a 10-foot fence there to allow, if we have to get anything into the back of the yard.
10-foot gate?
Uh, sorry, 10-foot gate, sorry, 10-foot gate. And then the, there is a staircase down to the basement on the Caputo side as well. So there's gonna be a gate there so that we would have the access down into the basement from the rear yard. And then there will be another gate by the garage side, basically.
Any other questions from the board? Um, Mr. Sli, did the, did the stipulation that Mr. Sobieski read cover your second point there?
Yes, I, my points are covered.
Great. Are there any questions from the public on, on this application? Are there any comments, is that a question?
Easy one. Comment.
Oh, a comment, oh, sorry, okay.
Okay, are there, so there's no questions, are there any comments on this application?
You didn't get one the last time.
Yep, yep.
Ty Adelstein, 172 River Side Drive.
Mr. Adelstein, do you swear or affirm testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
When you put the fence up by the tree line, we just asked that you don't put it so close to the trees that harms the roots, but that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, that was noted in the Environmental Commission, that just be mindful of any tree lines when you're putting roots.
For sure.
It's a good point, thank you.
Stipulation.
Yes, it'll be a stipulation.
Mr. Adelstein stole my thunder, I was, I'm usually the environmental commissioner.
He did, I know, but, well, it's his job, too.
I'll blame you here.
All right, do you wanna sum that up, please?
Yeah, absolutely, no further public complaint, no one else in the public, so I guess we're good. Okay, guys, so one variance being sought here, that's for a front yard fence height. Applicant is proposing a five-foot tall fence in the, the northerly front yard. There's two front yards here, this is a corner lot. Maximum permitted for a front yard fence is a four-foot tall fence. As far as conditions go, the proposed fence would be a decorative black aluminum, open fence, that appears at least substantially similar to the example provided in the application. And the, the appearance of the fence would otherwise comply with all of the ordinances, applicable fence requirements. I feel like I've said fence like 30 times already, we'll keep going. Condition two, the applicant shall provide a cut sheet of the proposed fence to confirm compliance with the ordinances, fence site transparency requirements to the Township Engineering Department, in assumption of their approval. And if the fence is to be installed near any trees, the applicant shall avoid tree rights and jog the fence as necessary. And that's it, just those three and the one variance.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm not sure if there's much to talk about on this one, or if we can, or if anybody wants to make a motion, so any comments or motion on this application?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Right. I give the motion to grant the variance. I see no detriment, I think it's in character, it's a safety concern, and I would approve this under C2.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Ms. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Tancredi?
Yes.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gereus.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 7D, which is Hector Ferrer and Elizabeth Silver, which is ZB 24019.
Yep, just give us one second, we're gonna organize here.
Yeah. Madam Chair, before we, I sort the parties in, I'll just mention that I reviewed the applicant's notice of this hearing. I found it to be sufficient in terms of its content and its timeliness of service. It was sent by certified male owners of property within 200 feet of the subject property on October 15th, and also published in the Burnersville News on October 10th, with more than 10 days in advance of tonight's hearing, and thus the board has jurisdiction to hear and decide the case in my legal opinion. With that, I will swear as the parties, as well as our board professionals, could everybody please raise the right hands for me?
We were pre-discussing.
Do all of you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
I do, great. So, I guess whoever's kicking us off, why don't you introduce yourself, tell us who you are, what your address is, and we'll get to it.
Uh, sure, Elizabeth Silver. I live at 445 Mount Erie Road in Baskin Ridge, along with my husband Hector Ferrer and our two children.
Do you wanna just tell us why you're here?
Okay, that's.
You know, what, what relief you're looking for. We do have your application, we have reviewed it, but why don't you summarize for us what you're looking for?
Sure, and thank you to the board for hearing our application tonight. I'm here, we purchased our home 11 years ago. It's a split-level home, two stories, built in 1958. We're here seeking a variance to try to build an addition on the home. The needs of our family have changed since we initially purchased the home, our family has expanded. We had a, my daughter was a baby when we bought the home, we now have a second child, so we have a 12-year-old and an eight-year-old. And we'd like to modernize the home and expand it to meet our family's needs. We are, the, the proposed work includes using our attached garage to build a new, bigger kitchen for the home, as well as a small ground floor addition next to that kitchen, which would allow us to have an entrance on Stockmar Drive, where our driveway is currently, so we can better access the new kitchen that we're building. And then there's also a second level above that, that we would like to build in order to create a new master suite, upstairs laundry, and a new bedroom for my daughter.
And just to clarify, that's a new kitchen, not an additional kitchen?
It is a new kitchen. We have an existing kitchen in the home, but we are going to remove the range, and it will become just a, what, what are we calling it?
A bar.
A bar. Yes, a refrigerator and sink, basically, will remain in the house. I should also mention, we're going to use, we have an existing detached garage on the property, so we currently have two garages. We're going to use the detached garage now for our cars, it's currently just used for storage. And so as part of this work, we'd also like to build a covered walk from the detached garage to the new addition, so that we can walk in inclement weather without, you know, being exposed to the rain and snow.
And, um, did you receive a copy of our town planner's memo, size memo?
I did, yes.
Did you have a chance to review it?
I did, yes, and I understand that the variances that we need or we are seeking here relate to the fact that there's a pre-existing deviation from the setback requirement on Mount Erie Road. Our house is a corner lot, so we have two fronts. So on the Mount Erie side of the street, we are at 65 feet from Mount Erie Road, rather than the 75 feet that's required for the front setback. We're not moving the house any closer to Mount Erie as part of this addition, but we are building a second level above the garage, and my understanding is that creates a non-conformance because the second level will not be 75 feet from the road.
Ms. Sli, you agree with that?
I agree.
Okay, well done.
What's at 59.3 in your memo, did?
No, I think it's, I think it's the front yard, Mount Erie.
67.
Yeah, 67.
It was the rear yard, okay. Still exacerb, vertically exacerbating it.
Right, so because it's a second level, there's a variance required there, even though.
Correct, and, and.
It's on top of the existing.
Correct, and the second variance is related to attaching the detached garage, as I mentioned, to the house with the covered walkway, because that makes it part of the house, as I understand it, from the memo at least, I hope I'm explaining this correctly. But that, that created a second need for a variance of the front setback on Stockmar, because now the detached garage is, is closer to Stockmar Drive than it should be.
You did a good job.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Ms. Sli, do you, I, I think it would be helpful, maybe, if you take us through your second point there, with, with the various variances, that, that might be helpful, here.
Yeah, I'm, uh, looking at my October 25, 2024 memo, comment number two at the top of page eight. The applicant just explained two A, which is the, the front addition. The B and C, which are the front yard setback along Stockmar, and the rear yard setback, those are both we, both created only because of the connecting garage to the house. Once you connect an accessory building to a principal building, the accessory building is subject to the principal building setbacks. So, the, well, the garage already had a variance for being where it is in the front yard. But the rear yard, right now the garage is 59 feet from the rear yard. The setback requirement for an accessory structure for, for rear setback is 20 feet. So it conforms, once you attach the garage to the house, then the setbacks that apply to the house apply to the garage. So now your 59-foot setback is short of the 75-foot setback that applies to the house. But all the construction, even the, the connection to the garage complies with the 75-foot rear yard setback, it's just the, the, a new requirement being applied to the existing garage, which creates that violation. And in the same situation as far as the front yard along Stockmar, actually, a very small portion of the connector where it meets the garage is actually over that 75-foot line, but 99% of the addition complies with the front setback along Stockmar, and, and the variance, the need for the variance is due to the connection to the garage, and the change in the setback that applies to the garage.
Okay, and then also, there was a point about lot coverage?
Yeah, that's number, the next comment, number three in my memo, the, um, the applicant is, with all the proposed improvements, they brings it to 15.76%, which is over by 324 square feet. The, this applicant has a unique case because the public sidewalk along Mount Erie Road is actually on their property, which is atypical. And that sidewalk accounts for 400 square feet. Essentially, all of the coverage that's over 15% can be attributed to that sidewalk, which is a pretty unique situation, but the public sidewalk will be accounted on kind of as coverage because it's on private property.
And, um.
If, without the sidewalk, lot coverage would be different.
And that's atypical because it's not typically counted as private property, not just the fact that we don't have a lot of sidewalks, but.
Well, typically the sidewalk would be located in the right way.
Yeah, but this one isn't? Why, why isn't it here?
I don't know, typically your right of way is at least 10 feet behind you.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
There's like four.
It isn't?
It's not, I mean, it's atypical, it happens sometimes. It happens, sometimes, there's an easement on the property encompassing the walkway. Sometimes, you see a temporary cul-de-sac that would be located with an easement on the property that adds hundreds of square feet, technically, to lot coverage.
The sidewalk is in the right-of-way on the Stockmar Drive side, but not...
But not on Mount Aerie. Yeah, and the Mount Aerie sidewalk is quite odd. It ends in the middle of our front yard, for some reason. They didn't continue it, and there's no continuing sidewalk over by my neighbor either, so it just cuts off, and...
How odd.
Yeah, it's, it's very strange. And I said, can I remove it? Because it's actually dangerous to lead someone into the middle of my yard, but I'm not allowed to remove it. Yeah. But we were not aware of that until we brought this application and learned that that was on our property, according to our property survey, so...
That's funny.
Yeah.
Mount Aerie, there's not sidewalks on that side?
No, no.
Only this...
Only this one portion.
That's why we could cover her whole property.
Exactly.
It's so odd, and she can't remove it, even though it's on her property, and it counts as her coverage.
I think the county's gonna claim rights to it, just like, oh, it's new things that...
County.
What about on Stockmar? If they wanted to take it off on Stockmar, they probably could.
Well, that's in the right-of-way.
No, they can't.
That is a right-of-way.
Yeah, and that sidewalk is good, because it actually continues down Stockmar. You can walk down it and use it.
Maybe they thought it would be odd to stop the sidewalk at the corner, just create another odd condition, I don't know.
Okay. Are any trees going to be removed, as part of this project, that you know of?
No. We actually are gonna add a little bit of landscaping on the Stockmar Drive side. We're gonna rip up a tiny portion of the driveway that's existing there to put in some shrubbery, make it look nicer where the new entrance is going.
Sorry, Mr. Sly, I kind of interrupted you there.
Well, number four was about trees. Number five, I think was touched on, that the kitchen's being relocated, and the existing kitchen is basically being decommissioned as a kitchen by removing the cooking facilities, which is why it is, the dwelling is not considered to dwelling. So, it's not an apartment. If, this is just making, I'm guessing the applicant's already aware that they still have to come out?
Yes.
It's pretty clear on the plans, so this is just making it double aware that it's got to stay that way unless you get further approval for an apartment. And at least this time, we would be in the main house.
We need more accessory?
Yeah, still need approval.
Do you, do you have any stormwater issues on the property now? Any issues with water, flooding?
No, and we actually put in drainage a number of years ago in our backyard, because we were seeing some collection of water in the middle of the backyard, so I had them put underground piping that runs out to the Stockmar Drive side of the property. So, it's much better now.
Okay. Mr. Quinn, did you have any concerns or actionable items on your side that we didn't cover?
No, I don't think I had any action items either. I mean, this seems like it's pretty tucked in, the rear yard. I don't see this being very visible. But I don't have any engineering concerns. There's no topography shown here. I think the only thing I advise you is that there's a limit of disturbance associated with construction, right? Which is where you disturb the land, once you cross certain thresholds in the township's 2,500 square feet, you'll have to show soil conservation measures, silt fence, and measures to keep soil from migrating off the property. And if you're over 5,000 square feet, which is not likely, you'll have to apply to the Soil Conservation District. So, you'll have to identify that soil.
Okay, my architect will help me with that, right, Tom? He's right here, if you have any questions for him.
That would be a condition, I think, for facility, to provide that claim.
Okay.
Did you also get a copy of the memo from the Environmental Commission on your application?
Yes, yes.
Were you able to review it? And do you agree or have any questions in some of their suggestions? For example, they recommend planting native trees or shrubs, or consider that when you're doing your additional landscaping? They talk about stormwater management a little bit, and they also talk about, you know, the protection and preservation of trees during your work.
Okay, yes, we'll take all of this into account.
So, just to be clear, you guys would be complying with all their proposed conditions? The employing stormwater best management practices during site work? Employing best management practices, preserve decked trees during site work? Plant native trees and shrubs in the composition of proposed landscaping? Will be a tree removal, replacement plan, because they're removing trees? They did also want you to be aware of any, the possibility of any groundwater tanks, lead paint, or asbestos. You guys should take any precautions if you encounter that stuff. And then you'd make, finally, they'd be suggesting make a good faith best effort to recite repurpose if you have any demolished material that's not going to be reused.
Okay, I did have a question about the first sentence that says it would not be occupied during construction. Is that requirement, that I not stay in the home during the construction? In the first sentence of the comments, it says that...
That's, I don't know why that's in the Environmental Commission memo.
I think they were suggesting that you might need a new certificate of occupancy, but no?
No, you can just ignore it.
Okay, because there's a portion of the home that is not being touched, and we were planning to stay in the home.
It goes to whether or not there's, there is some demolition involved in the project, and under certain, if your amount of, the board has heard this before, but if you exceed partial destruction of the structure, then you're basically considered building a new house. You have to comply with all zoning requirements, including lot area and lot width and frontage and other things. This is not called in that category. One of the criteria for deciding whether or not something is partial destruction can be whether or not you can occupy the home while it's under construction. But that's not the sole factor. I guess that's what the Environmental Commission is talking about here.
Right, and I think there was also one more comment about decks.
Yeah, I was just about to, I was just gonna ask, are you proposing a deck here? I thought it was just...
No, we're actually removing an existing deck and replacing it with a back patio. The deck is coming out, but I think maybe he was just saying if I decide to put it back? I don't know.
Well, if you change, you know, if, in the future...
In the future.
It's just asking you to consider leaving it open, like in between slots.
Right, okay.
The other thing that we just remind you also with respect to the deck being replaced with the patio, obviously, you know, any approval will be specific to those plans.
Yes.
And especially when you ask for a variance to be over the coverage. It's important that, if that is granted by the board, that it's specific to that number.
Yes, has to remain that size, as it is on the plan, yes.
Yeah, don't go over whatever the board may grant you.
If you go over, you have to come back.
You have to come back.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And then you may not give it.
Right.
She's right, when your contractor comes, he says, hey, you know, I got extra bricks.
We can just keep going. You gotta be, you gotta remember that...
Right, that that's part of the lot coverage, got it.
Anything else for the board that you want to share?
Just that I spoke with my neighbors that we noticed as part of the public notice, and I did not, they were supportive of the work and did not object to it, so...
Did you hear any concerns from any of those conversations?
I did not. There was maybe one neighbor that we tried ringing their doorbell, and they didn't answer, but other than that...
That's a requirement, okay.
Did you take these photos?
Yes.
All of them, all of them that were in the...
Were they, any of them taken by you guys? I don't know, I think they were all me. Oh, I emailed them, yes, they were me.
They all accurately depict the property?
Yes.
Current conditions, as it looks today?
Yes. Yes, those were taken specifically for this application.
When?
Right before we submitted, which was a couple months ago.
October.
October, yeah.
Any questions, any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Yes. Maybe you should consider sitting in the front row.
Those are the easy ones.
Title's fine, 172 River Side Drive. I just, I saw the paperwork, and you were gonna ask for changing of your address to Stockmar. Did the post office give you a hard time with that? Did you try that?
The town required that if we change it, that we present it to this board.
That was the only question, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, could you just identify yourself, I mean, you were sworn in, but I just...
Sure, Thomas Baio, I was the architect for the applicant, and I will be quiet.
Just so I understand, did you change your address?
No, no, so we are putting a front door...
Yes.
Well, there's, there's still a front door on the Mount Aerie side, but there's going to be a second entrance on the Stockmar side. So, I mean, if this board saw fit, we would like to apply for a change of address once the work is completed and there's a door there. I don't know how that works exactly, but...
It's not for this board.
It's not for this board.
It's not for this board.
They're not gonna change addresses unless there was a subdivision involving moving roads and things.
Got it, okay. Okay, that's fine.
It's not for us to consider?
Okay, no problem.
Mr. Sowieski?
Actually, real quick, before we wrap up, just wanna get, so we got Mr. Baio. Miss, can I just get your name and address for the record, so I know who you are?
Amanda Kriney, 911 Drive, Greenbrook.
How do you spell your last name?
K-R-I-N-E-Y.
And what's your relationship to this application?
This is my boss.
Oh, okay, you're one of the architects, okay, I got you, okay.
Future zoning board applicant.
Just wanted to make sure we knew who everybody was here, thank you.
One question, I didn't know if the architect was gonna identify, you know, the exterior colors or anything like that, or the type of exterior changes you were gonna make to the house.
You have to tell 10 o'clock.
Do you have any information?
No, I wasn't really talking about color.
We are putting new siding on the, on the house, but it's, it's white, like it's...
It's not determined, we might be doing an Alpine White, which is a little soft gray.
Yeah, it's white, white or light gray. It's gonna be something in that, consistent with my existing home, yeah.
All of those will have the consistent siding? The detached garage will have the same?
I'm not re-siding the detached garage, just the home. It's already white. It has white siding on the detached garage.
I think the question...
They will... Yes.
It would be aesthetically uniform, the entire, the additions would be aesthetically uniform with the balance of the dwelling, right? Is that, Mr. Baio?
Sorry, I'm not sure I'm following that one.
It's a simple question. The entire principal residence, aside from the detached walkway, the, sorry, attached walkway with columns, but it's open, that is going into a garage. That garage is not being re-sided, only the house. And the house will be uniform in siding.
Mr. Kraus, did you have a question?
Any exterior lighting that you're gonna be changing on the house?
Sure, the exterior lighting is gonna be per code, right, outside the doors. There's a current flood lamp that helps them light the yard. As we build our addition, we'll probably locate the flood lamp on there. Did I give you guys electrical plans in the presentation kit? I don't know if I did. I did not, we just kept the architectural drawings. So, I'll testify that there's gonna be a couple of flood lamps on the driveway side, and there will be some existing flood lamps replaced on the backyard side.
Flood lamps will be downward facing, so we don't have...
Yes. They will be downward facing, so we don't have light spillage to the neighbors.
They're not on 24/7, they're gonna be motioned, type of ways, or...
Oh, they should be, absolutely, yeah, yeah. They should not be on 24/7, they should be motioned. Motioned with a...
During nighttime, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, with the ability to bypass it when they have people over.
Any additional questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public, since we heard a little bit more? Are there any comments from the public on this application? Okay, all right, do you have anything else for us, or you want to turn it over to the board?
No, thank you for taking the time to hear my application. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we hit everything, okay. All right, so the applicant here is, applicants, my apologies, keep doing that tonight, two applicants, not just one. They're seeking four different bulk variances. First is for the principal dwelling front yard setback, that's to Mount Aerie Road on the east side of the property. 75 feet is the required minimum front yard setback here. They're proposing 67.25 feet. Second one, another principal dwelling front yard setback, this time to Stockmar Drive to the south. 75 feet again is the required minimum there, they're proposing 46.13 feet. Third variance is the principal dwelling rear yard setback to, that's to the west side of the property. 75 feet is the required minimum there again, and they're proposing 59.3 feet. And the last bulk variance is for lot coverage, 15% is the permitted maximum. They're proposing 15.76%. As far as conditions go, I did note that they would be, it was kind of the same condition throughout the memorandum we saw, but that was, they would be, prior to the issuance of a construction permit, the applicants would be revising the submitted plans to show the proposed limit of disturbance and to indicate whether any existing trees are to be removed. And that plan would be subject to review and approval of the Township Engineering Department. Oh, they would also, on the plan, confirm that certification is not required from either the township or Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, if it is not so required. The applicants also agreed to comply with the Common Center Environmental Commission's memo, which was undated, but we all know what we were talking about, because we just went through it before. That's, I won't go through them again, because we went through them before. And as other conditions go, they agreed that the, stipulated that the exterior appearance of the entire dwelling would be aesthetically uniform. Any exterior lighting fixtures would be downward facing or otherwise shielded, and the ones in the driveway area would be on motion sensors. And I believe that is it. If I'm leaving something out, somebody please tell me. No? Okay, 'cause I'm good.
I think you got it.
Thank you.
Okay, so any comments on this application, deliberations, motions?
Not all at once.
I see no detriment in anything here. I think it's just adding the second story. You're mostly remaining within the footprint, and you're remaining under the previous coverage. So, I see no detriment. I don't see a hardship here. It's the existing property. I think where the garage is sitting now, if it, if you didn't have the open walkway, it would conform, correct, Mr. Sly? So, I just, I just don't see a problem with it adding the walkway. In fact, I think that it adds to the beauty and the aesthetics of the house. I think you're making an improvement to the house, not just for you, but for anybody that may come after you. So, for me, I would see it as a C2, again, with no detriment, and, you know, working within the confines of our ordinance.
And I'd second that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I could also see it under C1 for the maximum lot coverage, just because the sideways sidewalk thing is so bizarre, and the fact that it's part of your coverage and that's your overage. So, I could see it under C1 and C2.
The hardship because of the...
Because of the sidewalk. Because the maximum lot coverage is over and requires a variance, I could see that under C2. So, C1 and C2.
Yep, I agree.
And I'd second that, it's in character with the neighborhood, so I see no judgment here.
So, we got a motion and a second, left and right. Ms. Baman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Tadic?
Yes.
Mr. Tencredi?
Yes.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Chairwoman Juniors?
Yes, good luck with your project.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Remember the maximum lot coverage.
I will, it's ingrained in my mind.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Any comments from members? Ms. Keeper, I think we have another special meeting next week?
Yes, next Thursday, May 14.
So, there's a special meeting where we will hear the signature case next Thursday, so if everyone can mark that one down... so if everyone can mark that one down to those who it applies to. Any comments from staff? Motion to adjourn? So vote, second?